And five, four, three.
Good evening and welcome to the Lone Tree July 7th, 2020 City Council meeting. Before we reopen our regular meeting, I want to let everyone know we are going to wait till 7:05 to begin the formal agenda. But in order to comply with the sixth amended Public Health Order 20-28, which recommends against government-held meetings of more than 10 people, the city is limiting physical attendance at public meetings to only essential staff, applicants, and elected officials, and will continue to provide access to public meetings via electronic participation for members of the public at this time. All attendees are required to wear face coverings when entering, exiting the building, and within six feet of another person. The city will also implement symptom monitoring measures for attendees such as temperature checks and completion of the city's facilities health screening survey before entering the meeting. While we wait for the formal meeting to begin, let me explain how we are hearing public comment during our virtual meetings. Comments that were submitted in writing prior to the meeting will be read into the record by a staff member during the public comment portion of the agenda. If you would like to type public comments during the public comment portion of the agenda, or right now, click Ask a Question in the sidebar of the virtual meeting and enter your name and address in the message window along with your public comment. Your name and comments will be read into the record by a staff member on your behalf. These messages are not visible to other members of the public watching the meeting. While it is a click Ask a Question, this is not a question and answer portion of our meeting. This is our council meeting where we listen to your feedback but do not enter into dialogue. If you would like to speak to council live during our public comment period, please indicate that in the Ask a Question box and again submit your name, address, and phone number, and you will receive a callback from the city staff so you can voice your public comment live. All comments should be directed to City Council, and we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. We are going to wait for a few more minutes to allow people to join us electronically. Again, we will wait until 7:05 to officially reopen our meeting. Thank you. Again, we are waiting till 7:05 to formally open our meeting to allow time for people to join virtually. So if you'll please be patient for about another minute and a half, we will reopen our regular meeting. Good evening and welcome to the Lone Tree, July 7th, 2020 Lone Tree City Council meeting. I'm officially reopening our meeting. We were in executive session. I'm going to ask that you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So there are no amendments to our agenda. It is adopted as published. Any conflicts of interest from council?
None.
None.
Wonderful. Now is the time for our public comment portion. Again, this is a period for brief comments concerning items that are not scheduled for a public hearing before council. As a reminder, council may not respond to your questions or comments during this period, but we will take comments and suggestions under advisement, and your questions will be directed to an appropriate staff member for response, or one of us will be following up with you. I'm going to ask if any comments were submitted in writing prior to the meeting.
No, Mayor Malay, and no comments were submitted prior to the meeting.
Any comments submitted in the sidebar as of right now?
I am not seeing any requests for public comment.
Again, if you would like to participate in public comment, you can type your comment during the Ask a Question in the sidebar of our virtual meeting and enter your name and address in the message window along with your public comment. If you would like to request to speak live to council using your phone, please indicate that in the Ask a Question box and submit your name and address, and you will receive a callback from the city to hear your comment. So I'll ask our city clerk if anyone has indicated either in the Ask a Question box they would like to submit comment.
I've not seen any requests, Mayor.
Okay. Let's give it a couple more seconds just in case people are working their way through our virtual meeting, and I'm going to hope that everyone had a safe and happy Independence Day weekend. We were sorry we could not celebrate as we usually do, but hope everyone was able to remain safe and socially distanced and celebrate with their families. So I am not seeing any additional comments, so I will close our period for public comment and move on to our announcements. Upcoming event information can always be found at thecityoflonetree.com or lonetreeartscenter.org websites. The Set the Stage is an ongoing challenge for fundraising for our Lone Tree Arts Center. Since March 13th, our stages have been quiet because of the COVID pandemic. We'd like to ask you to join the Lone Tree Arts Center Fund Board, the Andrew Winslow Foundation, and community leaders Harold and Ada Anderson, and Joel and Janet Kaufman in the Set the Stage Challenge to raise $180,000. We're very excited to announce we've raised over $112,000 so far. I'd ask you to go to the Arts Center website, lonetreeartscenter.org, and look under Set the Stage if you're in a position to contribute to the campaign. We will have a Virtual Arts in the Afternoon program, Belgian Chocolates on Wednesday, July 15th at 1:30 PM. Tunes on the Terrace, scheduled with Mary Louise Lee on Friday, July 24th, and Saturday, July 25th at 8:00 PM, and this is a live event. We're very excited. An outdoor event at our Lone Tree Arts Center Terrace Theater. I do expect those tickets to go quickly because we will not be able to seat as many folks as we usually can, but we hope you can join us. There will be a community blood drive on Wednesday, July 29th, from 11:00 to 3:45 at our Lone Tree Arts Center Event Hall. Please visit our city website, cityoflonetree.com, for signup information, and thank you to all who choose to participate in that. We'll move on to our consent agenda, which includes minutes from June 16th, 2020, regular City Council meeting, and claims for the period of June 9th through June 29th, 2020. I will look for a motion from council on our consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. All right, moving on to our administrative matters. We are hosting a public hearing affirming the emergency ordinance 20-04 amending Section 1-4-10 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code concerning violations and declaring an emergency. On second reading, our city attorney, Linda Michau, will be presenting this in person. And I am opening our public hearing and turning the mic over to our city attorney, Linda.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. This ordinance looks familiar to you because you did adopt ordinance 2004 as an emergency measure on April 30th, 2020. Next slide, please. So the purpose of the ordinance is to amend Section 1-4-10 of your municipal code to clarify the enforceability of violations of law occurring within the city and to remove some ambiguous language. And it also enhances local control over local violations of law. And as a home rule municipality, I think that's important for the city to embrace. Next slide, please. So Section 1-4-10 currently provides, and I should say that the emergency ordinance is still in effect, but it's only effective for 90 days from April 30th. So the municipal code, as it reads now, codified on your website, is that it's a violation of the code for any person to do any act which is forbidden or declared to be unlawful in the code. And the purpose of the ordinance is to expand the enforceability to include not only violations of ordinances, but to remove the ambiguous sort of language about what is forbidden because we don't really know what that means. And it's not defined in the code. But we've also included any violations of any rules, regulations, and executive orders. Next slide, please. So we adopted this, or we presented this to City Council as an emergency during the COVID-19 pandemic, which is still occurring today. But it was in view of the state public health orders as well as the local executive orders that City Council had adopted. And in reviewing the municipal code with Chief Wilson and our city prosecutor, we realized that we really didn't have any local enforcement powers over violations of those kinds of orders and rules and regulations. So in consultation with the chief and the city prosecutor, we presented ordinance 2004 to enhance the city's local enforcement powers. Next slide, please. And so it was immediately effective as of April 30th. It will only remain in effect for the next 90 days. Therefore, this ordinance is being presented to you on second reading and adoption as a non-emergency measure, which is consistent with your Home Rule Charter requirements. Next slide, please. I've already gone through that. Next slide, Jay. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. If there are no questions, the next slide is the proposed motion for City Council to consider.
Wonderful. Okay, any questions from council? I know we've seen this before. It's a bit of a repeat for us. So there are no council questions, but I will ask our city clerk if there is any public comment. And again, people can provide public comment under the Ask a Question box on the virtual meeting, and you need to submit your name, address, and phone number to do that. And I will look to our city clerk to see if anybody has asked to participate in public comment on this matter.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any requests for public comment.
Okay. I do want to give it a bit of a pause because since council didn't have any questions, we got through this a little bit quickly, so we'll let... And I'm glad you didn't have any questions because you've already adopted this, and it is in effect in our community. So I'm glad you know what we're... But let's give the public just about another 10 seconds or so, and you can give me the high sign, Mr. Rob, if somebody does ask to participate.
And Mayor and City Council, if I could, I would like to add too that the ongoing applicability applies well beyond this pandemic and any executive orders that may be adopted in accordance therewith. It really could apply to any rules and regulations that the city may adopt, including Public Works rules and regulations. So I think it has broader applicability than simply to this pandemic we're currently facing, and I wanted to make that point as well.
Thank you for clarifying that. I think that is an important point to be noted, so thank you. And I'm not seeing any public comment. I do believe I... Yes?
I just want to... Could I just take this pause to remind everybody that's joining us online or on the phone to mute yourself? We've got one caller that is not muted. Thank you.
Yeah, and they do that, if I can just interject Seth, by hitting star six to mute and unmute.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't know that either.
Thank you for the reminder, star six to mute right now. Okay. So I don't think we have any public comment on this. So I will close the public hearing, and I will look for a motion from council.
I move to affirm and re-adopt ordinance number 20-04 amending Section 1-4-10 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code concerning violations on second reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to our Community Development section. First up is the long-awaited Tall Tales Site Improvement Plan, and Jennifer Driverd will be presenting this. There will be several people joining us on this issue. So before we begin, we'd like to ask everyone to please introduce yourself prior to your initially speaking, and to please mute yourself using star six when you are not presenting to prevent background noise. So Ms. Driverd is here in person, so she will kick us up. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So good to be with you tonight. Next slide. The request before you is approval of a site improvement plan for a mixed-use residential and commercial community for intellectually developmentally disabled adults and board staff on a four-acre parcel. It includes a total of 28 apartments and paired cottages. The main cottage, often referred to as the Big Blue House, a barn-like event center with a coffee shop, gardens, and other outbuildings and landscaping, all known as the Tall Tales Ranch. Next slide. The property is located immediately east of South Havana Street, which also borders to the west of that I-25 and south of Ridge Gate property and Ridge Gate Parkway. And then, who's this all? There we go. So this is the Tall Tales Ranch site here. This is the historic ranch itself, the RTV garage, the Parker Water Sanitation District well site, and Happy Canyon Creek is off to the east. Next slide, please. So these are photographs that were taken of the property. The slide on the left is the view looking east from Havana Street. You can see the trees that cut from right to left. That's Happy Canyon Creek. And then looking on the right side photograph is the view looking northwest, and you can see the RTV garage in the background, and you can see how the property slopes from west to east down to Happy Canyon Creek. Next slide. So in terms of zoning, the property is within the Ridge Gate PDD Sixth Amendment. It's Zone SR for Schweiger Ranch. It's in Planning Area 32. The uses and heights comply with the zoning for the property. The setbacks, there's a 15-foot required setback for this particular application. However, on the south boundary, they only need an 11-foot proposed setback. The applicant can explain that in a little more detail. I will say that, and we'll show you this here in a few minutes, they've gone to a great measure to provide a forested buffer, if you will, a windrow, which is typical of old farming structures that will help provide some buffer and screening between the newer structures and the historic ranch complex. So next slide. So the Schweiger Ranch Sub area plan, you may remember, we brought that to council some time ago. It does set forth a vision, and its mission is to reveal the spirit of the Piner settlers and inspire an appreciation of the site's cultural and natural heritage, serving as an educational community resource for Lone Tree, Douglas County, and the larger region. The Schweiger Ranch envisions a variety of collaborative partnerships with other nonprofits to expand its mission. And so this nonprofit zone, if you look up again behind you here, this is the zone number three where the historic... or where the Tall Tales Ranch is proposed, four-acre site. The one in the middle, kind of the rectangular-shaped property, is the historic ranch outbuildings. That's a five-acre site secured by conservation easement, and the remaining is in Zone Two, and that's the open space buffer zone. It includes the trailhead. It includes the large meadow to the south, and then the Happy Canyon Creek corridor. Next slide, please. So a little bit of an overview. The buildings here that are proposed, the cottages, the big blue house in the middle, and then the barn and event center and coffee shop, all sort of cluster around the parking lot to the site. Access is afforded off Havana Street at this location. And again, as you heard tonight, there are no immediate plans for the expansion of Havana to its full extent, but there have been considerable talks and discussions between the applicant and Public Works with Jacob James and Justin Schmitz regarding how that's going to happen and what's going to be required there. They do have and are proposing a sidewalk at this location to connect down to the crosswalk. They will create that sidewalk at that location, providing access to the west, to the RTV parking ride and the light rail station there. And there will be a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at that location to alert people that people are crossing. So that's to serve sort of as an intermediary-type improvement in the future. At some point, when traffic warrants are called for, then they'll actually put in a full-lighted light there at that intersection. Circulation around the site... Oh, go back, please, one. And then circulation, there's trails at this location here to the adjoining property to the south as well as over here. You don't see where they're extended. It was the opinion of Keith and his team with the foundation that they not want to, particularly for this trail here at this location, that it actually dead-end at the property and not go through the ranch. The other one that's sort of to the west of that, there will be a soft-surface trail across. And then, of course, in the Happy Canyon Creek corridor, there will be a regional trail connection that will provide access there as well. Snow storage is provided on-site next to the parking structures. There is a retaining wall that was of some discussion in the planning commission meetings at this location. And at its highest point, it's nine feet, and so there was some discussion about putting a fence on top of that to provide security and so that people, not just the residents there, but anyone wandering, wouldn't fall off. So that was discussed, and there is a fence that was actually put in, the SIP coming to council to address that issue. Last, parking. The property does meet the minimum parking requirements. Next slide, please. In terms of landscaping, the application needs the required minimum 15% landscaping, particularly when you account for the amount of native and natural land around it, landscape around it. The landscape materials and the whole landscape plan is zerscape in concept and practice. The landscape materials do provide year-round interest through evergreens, grasses, and other materials. The windscreen that we were talking about earlier is at this location, and again, those will be Colorado blue spruce principally and ponderosa pine trees to provide that screen. And then finally, in this lower corner here is where water quality pond is proposed. I would say that one of the conditions as part of the application is a pipe that would extend from the parking lot down to this water-quality pond and providing an easement for long-term maintenance, particularly if the city needs to access that for some reason. Next slide. In terms of the architecture, we believe the application does meet the provisions set forth in the sub-area plan for Schweiger Ranch. It's not intended to completely copy or mimic the form or the actual details of the historic ranch compound but be compatible with it. And you can see that in all of the details, and the applicant will go to this in much greater detail, but all sides are accounted for in terms of architectural character and detail. The historic character is also provided here. And in terms of the roof line, the vertical windows that are used throughout, the siding here is a board and batten siding. On the historic house is lap siding, horizontal lap siding. So again, not the exact same, but very similar in nature. And then the porches are also very much a defined feature here. They don't have the same detailing, but the brackets along the proposed structures do provide some of a Western-type thing to them. Next slide, please. Side furnishings are found... will be found throughout. Many of them are of a teak wood, proposed for durability, but also to fit in with the natural landscape. Next slide, please. So our referral responses are being addressed by the applicant. Next slide. On June 23rd, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the SIP with the conditions recommended by staff. Next slide. Staff finds that the application is in accordance with the comprehensive plan, SIP requirements of the zoning code, and the variance approval criteria of Section 16-26-30, the design guidelines, the Ridge Gate PDD Sixth Amendment, and the Schweiger Ranch Sub area plan. Next slide. The recommended conditions include execution of a site improvement plan improvement agreement regarding construction of public improvements. This is required primarily of all SIPs. Number two, execution of a drainage easement for the detention pond and storm pipe between the parking lot and the detention pond that I described earlier. And number three, Public Works approval of engineering documents. So with that, I can... I'd like to introduce Keith before we take questions because I think their team will answer a lot of these, and with that, I'd like to introduce Keith Summon.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Of course, another excellent staff report from Jennifer, and thank you, Jennifer, for all your diligence in working out the many details to bring this project to you all tonight. This is pretty exciting. This is the first SIP for a development project on the east side. I know you've looked at a couple of SIPs for utility buildings and things like that, and those are important, but a private development project is very exciting to us, of course, and it's certainly been a long time coming for us. And by the way, I'm wearing two hats here tonight. I guess one hat is the Schweiger Ranch Foundation President, but I'll also drift into comments in my role as the Development Director for Ridge Gate and Executive Vice President with Coventry Development Corp. But this has been a long time coming. We actually started working on infrastructure planning and investments in 1999, beginning with the new Ridge Gate Parkway interchange, followed by the strategy to get the light rail extended and all leading up to the 2004 inclusion election where Lone Tree citizens voted themselves into the RTV. In 2006, we included all the east side property into the Parker Water and Sand District, and that included the conveyance of all of our water rights to them and the payment of $13 million inclusion fee. And then in 2008, the Ridge Gate interchange construction was started. We contributed land and about $18 million for that. In 2013, we had a partnership with the Sierra Ridge Metro District on the upsizing of a sewer main over to the Parker Water and Sand Treatment Plant that was $2.5 million just in prep for knowing that we needed to connect to that line. And then obviously in 2019, the southeast light rail extension was completed after many years of work by many, many people. And obviously, right now, there's some infrastructure work going on on the east side, including the Ridge Gate Parkway expansion. There's also a sanitary sewer lift station, quite an expensive thing, and a forced main going over to that Sierra Ridge line that we... and a forced main going over to that Sierra Ridge line that we put in place years ago. And also, the first of many wastewater mains. That's about $25 million of work. So I'm not going to total all those up, but it gets to be a pretty big number to pre-service these areas for development. So you're always pretty happy when development is going to start. And approving the SIP is the first step in that whole path. So thanks for bearing with me through all that. You know, this project is also really exciting to us because it's a very unique partnership project between the Schweiger Ranch Foundation and Tall Tales Ranch. The Schweiger Ranch Foundation is really pleased that we've finally gotten to this point after many, many years of discussions and prep work, which Jennifer described. The, actually, who's ever controlling these slides? If you could go to the first, the next slide, please. Great, thank you very much. Just some pretty pictures and facts about Schweiger Ranch for you all to watch while you're listening to me drone on here. So the basic structure of this is that the Schweiger Ranch Foundation will enter into a long-term ground lease with Tall Tales Ranch in order to provide the land for their project at no cost to them. Yet, the Schweiger Ranch Foundation will retain ownership of that land. The design of their project, as Jennifer reviewed with you, as well as the ground lease, has already been approved by the Schweiger Ranch Foundation Board of Directors. And through the design process, one of our Board of Directors is a professor at UC Denver specializing in historic architecture. So she helped in the review of the plans through the design review process. And I think the results, the results speak for themselves. You know, there's really a very unique alignment between these two nonprofits because we're non-competitive. We don't do the same thing at all. But by working together, we can both accomplish so much more. We can help Tall Tales Ranch by providing them free land. That's already got zoning for their project and services and so forth. In a ranch-like setting, which the Tall Tales ranchers really love. They love being out in that kind of environment, and they can do a lot in that environment. And it's a site that's right across the street from rail access to help those of them that are high-functioning get to jobs and get around the city. So it really couldn't be better, I think. And you'll hear from the Tall Tales Ranch folks, I think they'll say the same thing. For Schweiger Ranch, what bringing the Tall Tales ranchers to the property does is that their presence, we feel, once they're all living there, is going to help Schweiger Ranch expand its offerings. We all love the animals. We all wish there could be more animals out there, but they take so much darn care. It's crazy. It's no wonder these people had nine children out there. So we have the goats and the chickens right now, and we dream about other livestock. And having the ranchers there will help us achieve that goal someday. So we're excited about that. And that will be an additional amenity for all the people of this region to come and see and interact with livestock. The next slide, please. So I think most of you have seen this image. This is kind of our aspirational master plan vision for the development near and around the Ridge Gate Station, the RTV Ridge Gate Station. And at the kind of top of the rendering, you just can barely make out the Schweiger Ranch facilities, and Tall Tales has been drawn into that as well. And then there's all kinds of new development that's going to be popping up. You're going to be seeing some of these other projects later on this year. And the next two items on tonight's agenda are a couple of plots to help create all these lots and blocks that you see here in this rendering so that we can sell lots to developers to start making this image a reality. And it will leave us with some lots also up along Ridge Gate Parkway for some future TBD development that we're working on finding the right prospects for. By the way, excuse me, Schweiger Ranch is opening. I don't know if any of you were out for the Teddy Roosevelt Fireside Chat on June 20th, but that was our very first event for the year. We could only have 10 people. We had 10 people, which was exciting and interesting, too, because we normally have, you know, more than that, usually double or more than that. But we have usually, you know, 30 or 40 people say they're coming, and only half of them come. In this case, 10 people said they were coming, and they. So just an interesting anecdote with the times. That was a fun event. That gentleman does a great job putting on Teddy Roosevelt. We are planning to open the ranch for its first open day on July 18th. And there will also be a campfire that evening. Campfire, if we're allowed to have outdoor fires. If not, I don't know what, but there'll still be s'mores, don't worry. And that's, that event that evening is a naturalist hike with a naturalist from South Suburban. It's a partnership project that Schweiger Ranch is doing now with South Suburban. So we're slowly opening. We're trying to figure out what kind of touring we can do with the people limitations. As you know, the inside of the house is very small. So the tours may mostly be in the outbuildings and so forth. We're still working through some of the details on all of that. But we want to get it open. It's mostly an outdoor event, and people want to come there. We have lots of volunteers that just come there to get out on the ranch and help with the activities. So we're hopeful to have some offerings this summer. Maybe not quite as much as we would normally have. And we're still not sure about our premier event at the end of the year, the Austrian Christmas Festival TBD. So with that, I'm going to introduce Susan Mooney. And she can introduce her team with Tall Tales Ranch. I first met Susan and her husband, Pat, it's probably been almost four years now, when a friend of mine, who has a son receiving services from Tall Tales Ranch, asked me if Ridge Gate had any free land that we could give this organization. And after some careful thought, I said, well, Ridge Gate might not, but we have Schweiger Ranch, and there might be a good fit there. And so, long story short, we've now evolved to this point where we both believe it's a wonderful fit. It's going to be a great opportunity for both groups and tons of potential for the city and the region, I think, to grow and adapt to this very important need. So Pat and Susan founded Tall Tales Ranch because they also have a son who is developmentally intellectually disabled. And they wanted to make sure that he would have a place to live if they couldn't care for him at their home. So you really just have to admire what they're doing here. This kind of facility is so badly needed. So with that, Susan is not here, but she's.
Remotely participating.
She's in the cyberspace.
That's right.
So I introduce Susan Mooney.
And Susan, if you wouldn't mind, just, we know you, but if you and Pat wouldn't mind introducing yourselves and just saying your title for the benefit of our virtual participants.
Sure, sure, absolutely. Well, thank you, Keith, and good evening, Mayor Malay and all the members of the City Council. We are Pat and Susan Mooney, the founders of Tall Tales Ranch. I serve as the Executive Director of Tall Tales Ranch, and we are both thrilled and honored to be here with you this evening. This is a huge milestone for us. It's actually following on Tall Tales' sixth birthday. And we just appreciate the opportunity to present our site improvement plan to you tonight. To tell you a little bit about Tall Tales Ranch and the background, we are an organization that is absolutely dedicated to supporting people that are living with intellectual and developmental disabilities, like autism and Down Syndrome. The inspiration for our work comes from our 26-year-old son, Ross, who acquired a brain injury and a permanent disability when he was 14. Tall Tales Ranch is different and unique compared to things that are out there currently, especially in Colorado. We're forward-thinking and we're innovative because we're more than just about putting a roof over somebody's head and making sure that they have food to eat. Tall Tales Ranch is an intentionally integrated space where a diverse group of people can come together to live, to work, to socialize. It will be a place where the greater community is welcomed and encouraged to visit our coffee shop and community gardens, to rent our event barn, and to learn firsthand the benefits and the beauty of interacting with people who are differently abled. As Mayor Malay, actually, in a conversation she and I had one time, she really beautifully stated that diversity is what makes a complete community. And this could not be more poignant than today. Now, we're so appreciative of the support and encouragement that we've received from Lone Tree, and we're excited to call this forward-thinking city our home one day. Thanks also to Keith and Elizabeth, to Keith Simon and Elizabeth Matthews of Coventry Development and the Schweiger Ranch Foundation for both the land donation, but also for the support and the advocacy that they have shown us since the very beginning. It has been wonderful to dream about this partnership with them. And as Keith said, to have two nonprofits come together in a non-competitive sort of way and to really collaborate. We're excited about the special project and about moving on to the next. We're progressing our plans to launch a capital campaign soon, and we've already got some interest from both commercial and residential builders. So it is my pleasure to recognize and introduce our talented design team. This amazing group has worked so hard to bring our vision to life, and we are so grateful for all of them. From Norris Design, Diana Rayel, Will Woodward, Samantha Crowder, and Sean Malone; from Garden Seudic Architects, Gary Godden, Jen Jess, and Kelsey Dig; from American Company, Carson Best Grove; and from our own internal board members who make up our building committee, Wendy Wanger from Stone Ridge Homes and Mark Gray from Buildmark. Everyone has been so instrumental in getting us to this point, and we're just so excited. Turn it over now to Samantha Crowder.
Thank you, Susan and Pat. Got to give you props, too.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Susan, and thank you, council. We're actually a little behind on the presentation. If you could hop to, I think, two slides from where we're at right now. Perfect. Right. So like Susan said, my name is Samantha Crowder. I'm with Norris Design, and I'll be walking you through the rest of this presentation. The site here is envisioned as a community which provides residents the opportunity to live and work on side building and fostering both relationships and vocational skills. Access to the ranch is served from south Havana Street, with the main circulation of the site provided through the central parking lot. The 56-stall parking lot serves both the residents, visitors, coffee shop, and event attendees. For larger events, overflow parking can be accommodated at Schweiger Ranch and vice versa through a shared parking agreement. In the planning commission, we also talked about, you know, for even larger events like the Austrian Christmas, obviously, there is parking over at the RTV, although not official. We definitely encourage people to use the rail line and utilize those sources over there. Pedestrian circulation is provided through a combination of concrete and cobble paths which connect all areas of the site together, as well as the Schweiger Ranch. An event barn and coffee shop are proposed along the northern portion of the site adjacent to Havana Street. These spaces are envisioned to provide opportunities for revenue throughout the year, as well as provide opportunities for employment to the residents. The event barn and coffee shop total approximately 8,000 square feet of commercial combined. The coffee shop includes space for table, bar, and lounge seating, as well as a service kitchen. The main level of the event barn includes a catering kitchen, restrooms, storage, and mechanical, and the grand hall, which can accommodate between 100 to 120-person event. The second level includes six office/flex spaces, storage, and conference rooms. These spaces are open to the grand hall below. All event office spaces are envisioned to be rentable and will provide year-round income for the ranch. 28 residential units are proposed amongst the two paired cottages. Each cottage includes a two-bedroom unit and six one-bedroom units. Units include a mix of studio and private bedrooms, private bathrooms, kitchens, and living spaces, a resident lounge, and laundry ties each cottage to its corresponding pair. Located between the paired cottages is the Big Blue House. This house is envisioned as the main community space for the residents. It houses an open-style living and lounge area, communal dining, kitchen, library, and computer room on the main level. And the upper level houses staff quarters, complete with two bedrooms and a shared bath and storage. Both paired cottages and the Big Blue House include covered front and back porches and outdoor spaces overlooking Happy Canyon Creek to the east and a shared activity lounge to the west. To the rear of the Big Blue House, an outdoor community gathering area is planned, which includes porch swings, a community table, outdoor lounge area, fire pit, and overhead trellis. Other side amenities on the ranch include a bus shelter and planned garden and orchard, along with a potting shed located along the south side of the parking lot. This garden allows residents the opportunity to grow their own produce in addition to providing a transition to Schweiger Ranch. Next slide, please. Tall Tales Ranch is envisioned to be constructed within two phases. Phase one includes the parking lot, event barn, and coffee shop, and northernmost paired cottage. Having the event barn and coffee shop included in phase one provides a focal point for the ranch and establishes a community center for ranch participants, residents, and guests. The barn and coffee shop also provide opportunities for vocational training and include opportunities for income and fundraising for the ranch. In addition, having one of the paired cottages included in the first phase provides a resident component, which is essential to the intent of the Schweiger Ranch Subarea Plan, and enables participants to live on-site, further fulfilling the larger vision of Tall Tales Ranch. Phase two includes the Big Blue House, the southernmost paired cottage, and remaining site improvements such as the garden and bus shelter. These elements of the ranch will come online based on market demands and available financing. Next slide, please. The landscape character of our Tall Tales Ranch is intended to blend with the existing rustic and natural aesthetic of the land. Materials include a mix of native and adapted species, which together creates soft edges and evoke a Colorado Prairie style. Next slide. Please. Next slide, please.
Yeah.
Thank you. I know, those were some pretty pictures. We just want to look at them longer. All buildings within Tall Tales Ranch are designed to be complementary in massing scale, color, and materials to the existing historic Schweiger Ranch. Shown here is the event barn and coffee shop as a classic barn massing with multiple window groupings and roof planes. There is a covered patio planned on the north side overlooking the creek, which provides access to the main event space inside. The coffee shop and barn access are located on the parking lot side of the building. You can see that the coffee shop is planned as a separate color, indicating a separate use from the main barn. Next slide, please. Other materials include woodlook siding, lap siding, and muted tones, and a mixture of standing seam metal roofing and asphalt shingles. Next slide, please. The paired cottages are two-story farmhouse-style buildings. They include a mixture of lap siding and board and batten materials in neutral tones. Tall, narrow windows are prepared, are proposed along all four sides. Lighting and porch details are reflective of a simple ranch aesthetic and are complementary to the existing Schweiger Ranch farmhouse. Next slide, please. Here's a quick view of those materials a little closer. You can see, similar to the event barn, a mixture of asphalt shingles and standing seam metal roofing are proposed. Next slide, please. The Big Blue House is named for obvious reasons. The house is big and it's blue. The home has a similar farmhouse-style design with tall, narrow windows, a mixture of lap siding and board and batten, and a covered front porch. Next slide, please. The strong blue color provides the house with character and notes it as a special community feature while still being respectful of the historic farmhouse color palette. It also uses a mixture of standing seam and asphalt shingles. Next slide, please. Other elements within the site include the parking structure, potting shed, bus shelter, and trash enclosure. Use similar roof forms and materials as the other buildings on-site, creating a cohesive character and design. And if we just kind of scroll through the next slide, please. It's just a closer view of the materials for the parking shed. Next slide. Here is the potting shed and bus shelter. Next slide. And a little bit closer. You can see that all the materials are very similar. Next slide. So the last two slides I have here in the presentation are some 3D views of the site. So the last two slides I have here in the presentation are some 3D views of the site, which better showcase the ranch as a whole and really help to tell the story of how these buildings will complement the land and existing historic Schwager Ranch. This view is taken from the southwestern boundary looking east. Notice how the site gradually steps down toward Happy Canyon Creek. You may also notice that on the right side of the image, there is proposed evergreen landscape buffer between Tall Tales Ranch and the existing Schwager Ranch. This buffer, as Jennifer mentioned, will reduce visual impacts between the two uses. It's also reminiscent of a traditional windscreen often seen between neighboring ranches. Next slide, please. This view is taken from the northwest corner of the site looking south. This view shows the relationship between the two ranches and how the site is terraced to best capture the views of the adjacent open space, which are quite beautiful. Next slide. And with that, I'll conclude our presentation and hand it back to Jennifer. We have our development team here present to answer any questions, if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer? Or let me just ask Council, are there any questions for any of the development team? Yes, Jay?
Question. It's a project I'm very excited about. I love the authenticity of the ranch feel. Did you ever consider solar panels? Was that ever part of the discussion? Just look at the aerial view, there seems to be some opportunities there, but I don't know if that was ever part of the equation.
You know, I'm not sure if that was. Maybe that's a better question maybe for Mark or Susan, if that was ever considered.
You know, we have talked about that. But Mark, I will let you answer that if you're on and can hear. No?
No.
Well, yes, but we have, we have thought that that would be a great idea. And so I think that definitely, I mean, we didn't, we haven't built it into the plans, but I think that it's something we'd be very interested in pursuing, for sure.
I think, and there was some concern about the expense of that as well going into this. So maybe an afterthought down the road. I don't know, but there has been discussions, but we see the value in it.
Absolutely.
And when?
My question is, you had mentioned in the barn structure, there would be rentable offices and space. Does that include that entertaining space, the great hall, the 100-plus capacity?
Absolutely. Yes, yeah. So all the spaces, and especially the great hall, is envisioned to be rentable, you know, both for, for Tall Tales Ranch, obviously, we would use that space for, you know, our events that we're having, but it's definitely a great opportunity for renting out for other people in the community and getting some revenue coming in, but also providing an opportunity for the community to use. I don't know, Susan, if you want to elaborate on that anymore. I know you have a great vision for that space.
Well, I just, you know, I feel like that whole, it's more of a millennial thing, maybe, I don't know, I'm dating myself, but that whole, you know, shared co-working kind of space, and I think it would be just a really great way. Certainly, the conference rooms, we have, we want to make a bit to the community, whether having board meetings or, you know, small gatherings of some kind, meeting kinds of things. But I would love to see some of those office spaces rented out for people in the community, and they can come get their coffee and just really interact with our ranchers. And so, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Kathy?
My question's for Jennifer on the parking. So can you, I know you mentioned at the front, but how many spaces are on?
There's 56 spaces on the site. It would call for 58.
Okay.
And so they actually meet that quite handily. Our zoning code provides that you can get up to a 20% reduction in parking when you're within a quarter mile of transit. They're right across the street. But also, more importantly, we didn't deduct from that total any of the mechanical areas, restrooms, or whatever from the square footage. So they, they well meet that. And then they also have, as I think Keith mentioned, the opportunity for use of the trailhead parking. And so, yeah, they're adequately provided.
The way I could see the plan is that there is a walkway between this property and Schwager.
Yes.
A pass so that they were using, like, so for a larger event, if they are using, that they could use the parking at Schwager to try to do overflow and that kind of thing. Just thinking that, you know, I think you guys are going to be wildly successful, and you're going to have a lot of people who want to rent out that space because it's going to be beautiful, and it's going to have an opportunity that's unlike any other in Lone Tree. So I'm excited for that, and also just mildly concerned that, you know, with that, those kind of numbers being available there, that there's parking that supports that for larger events.
And again, it's right across from the light rail station, so people also have that opportunity to take light rail right in and walk directly across the street.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mike, did you have something?
Jennifer, I have two questions, and I think they both relate to drainage and water quality and Happy Canyon. One, the need and the value of the retaining wall. Why is it there?
Well, because of the slope. The property slopes down pretty dramatically down to Happy Canyon Creek. So they needed, with the improvements, you've got to keep a certain grade. So that's why that was required there.
Having to do with flood control problems from Happy Canyon?
Not so much for the retaining wall, I don't think. And I don't know if Jacob or one of their team want to respond more clearly to that or more specifically to maybe some of your questions. But basically, it's a steep slope, and they're having to pick up grade.
Wow. The second question has to do with water quality and the retention pond. Were there any referral comments from Cherry Creek Basin Water Authority regarding?
They were a referral on this, and we did send them a referral. And they're, they're not yet to the point where they're going to have the more specific plans for, but they do have the plans for the detention, but I think they'll be working with them in the future for that.
Thank you.
Jennifer, could you clarify for me, who is responsible for those, the tree forest or the forest fence, or whatever we're calling that?
Wind.
Wind fence?
Wind row?
Yeah.
Yes. My understanding is that Tall Tales will actually plant the trees. They'll be responsible for installing those, but the water will be provided, if I'm correct here, Keith, from Schwager Ranch or for the, maybe some of the maintenance of that. They'll have to work out those details.
So I couldn't, my old eyes are having trouble with drawings, but so are the trees on the Schwager Ranch property, right?
Yes.
Okay, so this is almost like the neighbor saying, we'll provide some screening on your land?
Right.
And who's going to have the long-term responsibility for maintain, the maintenance of those trees?
My understanding, it's Tall Tales.
Is that Keith?
Yeah.
So Tall Tales, so if one of those trees doesn't quite make it?
Right.
And are those trees anticipated to be put in, in the first phase or the second phase?
I think those are in the second phase.
Okay. Okay, okay. And that's all documented where?
Actually, that's really a good question. It probably should be better documented on the plan, but I know you're working out a lease agreement with them, so I was planning on including that as well.
Is there somebody online that wants to comment? No. Keith, do you mind just commenting for me where, where, where is it going to be documented? The trees and who's going to be doing what for the trees?
I think we're going to do a simple agreement, maybe with Keith and Schwager Ranch. Potentially, I don't know.
Good catch, Mayor. You know, and I think there is some merit to thinking about trying to get those trees planted sooner rather than later, just so they can grow, because they're going to go in relatively small, right?
Right, right.
It's better to put it in small.
Safer, yes.
It really is. There was some discussion about that, the planning commission, about upsizing them, and it was explained that, you know, really, the success rate is better if you plant something small. So I would say, you know, we haven't figured out the answer to your question, but my, after seconds of careful thought, answer would be, we could include that in the lease, you know, the lease agreement.
That would be great.
Because remember, I mean, while there's a property line, it's all Schwager Ranch property.
Right, right.
So I think, you know, we can assure you that we will cover that in the lease agreement as to who's going to maintain that wind row.
Great.
We'll figure it out between us and them.
I appreciate that. I think it's been, you know, we've seen many site plans before us where it has not been very clear, and we just want to make sure there is clarity yet. This place is going to exist long after the rest of us are gone, and I think it just needs to be written down someplace that, who is responsible for what. So Susan, did you want to add something?
I did, actually. This is Samantha with Norris Design. I did want to clarify, I was talking with our landscape architect. He did want to confirm that it is shown in the plans that Tall Tales Ranch will be irrigating those trees.
Oh, Tall Tales?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. And I would encourage you to plant them sooner rather than later, given, I couldn't agree with Keith more, and my own personal experience is, put them in a little bit smaller, they seem to take about five years and they sprout right up. So that was my really only question. I do want to compliment you on this design. I think it is really well done and absolutely complements the Schwager Ranch. So to the whole team that was involved in that, and I love the layout, you know, it's very, very thoughtful, and I think would be, you know, proud to have it in the community. It really, really did a nice job with that, so thank you for that. So let me get back to my notes. So, Council, any other comments? All right, so did you have the motion up on the screen? And I'll look for a motion from Council.
I move to approve Project SP 20-02R, a site improvement plan for Tall Tales Ranch with the three conditions listed in the staff report dated June 30th, 2020, and which conditions shall be recorded in the official meeting minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Happy birthday, Tall Tales Ranch! If you wanted your sixth birthday!
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. We're very grateful to all of you and all the hard work.
Absolutely, thank you.
The dedication.
Kudos to all of you. We are looking forward to welcoming this into the city. So thank you, guys, very, very much. And go have a celebratory toast for us, because we got to, we got to still work here. So thanks, guys.
I think we might. Bye, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The fun. Now the back to business, folks. All right. Item 10.2 on our agenda, which is a replat of Lot A, Bridgegate East filing one, First Amendment subdividing 20 and 1/2 acres into four lots, a tract and road right-of-way. Jennifer, dry bread again presenting, and I've read all the stuff, so you don't have to repeat all of that again, right?
Right. I just would make one correction, that the title is actually Bridgegate East filing one, Second Amendment. That was our error in the staff report and the agenda.
Oh, okay.
But that's in fact, Second Amendment, filing one, Second Amendment.
Thank you.
So with that, next slide, please. So we're requesting final approval for the subdivision of, as you said, 20.5 acres and four lots of tract and road lights-of-way. Next slide. The property is located, as shown, in this area in, I'll do this, in orange here, includes this large area. Here's the parking garage. So it does include a fairly large land area, is bounded on the west by the light rail line, and on the east by Havana Street, on the north by Bridgegate Parkway. Next slide, please. And this is a photograph taken from Havana Street looking to the west or southwest. You can see the parking garage in the rear, and the property, again, slopes from west to east. Next slide. So the Bridgegate PBD Sixth Amendment is where this property is found, the zoning, and it is within the city center planning area. Next slide, please. The Lone Tree City Center Subarea Plan provides guidance for development in this area, and this will be subject of a future SIP, and one that we expect in, possibly two this year. So the area in red in this area is Lot 2A3, and that's a commercial district within the Bridgegate PBD Sixth Amendment. The area in orange is for a mixed-use district, and the property is located, as you can see, just north of the park and ride. Next slide, please. So these show the various lots. 2A1 and 2A2 is the subject of a five-story parking or apartment complex that is proposed to come before Council this year. And I do have a graphic I intended to include it in the PowerPoint. If you'd like, I can pass that around for you to kind of take a look at, as well as the 67-unit attainable housing project in that area as well. The attainable housing project is in Lot 2A4, which is in this side here. So this is the apartment complex. We have no applications yet that we're, that we're working our way through for the commercial zone property. Next slide, please. All referral responses are being addressed by the applicant and/or are addressed in the conditions of approval. Next slide. Staff finds the application is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, the Bridgegate Plan Development District Sixth Amendment, the Lone Tree City Center Subarea Plan, and Chapter 17 of the Municipal Code, which governs the subdivision of land. Next slide, please. So these are the suggested conditions. I'll read them in, so you won't have to.
Thank you.
The applicant shall execute temporary easement agreements in a form approved by the city attorney to replace the drainage easement to be vacated and the slope easement to be vacated. The drainage easement shall terminate upon construction and completion of new drainage improvements within tract A, Bridgegate East filing two. The slope easement shall terminate upon construction and completion of the retaining wall adjacent to the existing sidewalk. The final plat should be revised to reflect this condition as determined by the city attorney. Next slide. For Section 17, 560, print 10, regarding the final plat exhibit requirements, all road names shall be indicated on the final plat. A name for the road proposed north of lots 2A1 and 2A2 shall be identified on the final plat presented to City Council. If the applicant has not identified a specific road name by the City Council meeting, the applicant may propose two or three name options for Council consideration and approval. The final road name is subject to approval by Douglas County Addressing, and Kisan will address that in his presentation. Next slide, please. And then the final condition, standard one, final approval by the City Public Works Department for technical requirements. So with that, I'll introduce Keith.
Wearing his other hat?
A man of many hats.
Good evening again. I guess I'm, now I'm here as just Bridgegate.
Just one hat now.
You know that.
You've been demoted.
No, thanks again, Jennifer, and thanks for your leadership on this one. This one required a lot of work from the public works staff as well, because they, the technical teams from both sides worked together really nicely on how to figure out how to create an urban block and grid pattern in this, at this TOD, that would function properly, carry the traffic, and so on and so forth. So lots of really down-in-the-weeds work there, even to the extent of adding to the right-of-way width of Havana Street to add necessary turn lanes and things like that in both this plat and the next one that you've got coming in front of you. And so this one is an amendment, because the original plat was done when we were donating the land for the rail extension. That was the filing one, the very first plat on the east side, and so this is an amendment of that now to break it up into some additional blocks to help do what that rendering that I showed you a little bit earlier wants to do. And so I think you've heard this before also, that, you know, we've made this decision to start on the east side with not only the southwest residential village with Shea Homes, but also some higher-density mixed-use development at the rail station for a variety of reasons. Havana is already partially built. We can kind of get started there with some existing improvements, and we can create a critical mass in this area, the southwest village and the end-of-line station, with ultimately somewhere around 2,500 residential units of all different types, from affordable apartments to market-rate apartments to all different kinds of for-sale products. And we think that would be good for a couple of reasons. There's a lot of demand in the housing market for product in Lone Tree at this location, you know, given the access to the highway and access to the light rail. and access to the light rail. So we and all the developers feel really strong about how this will be received in the marketplace. And if anything, people are wanting to buy homes a little further out from Denver than they ever have before, for a variety of reasons. And so as Jennifer mentioned to you, there's a couple of SIPs that are going to be coming to you for a couple of projects in this area that we'll be creating lots for with this. And then we're also creating a parcel up on Ridgegate Parkway, right at the interchange. That's about seven or eight acres. That is for a TBD, commercial, mixed-use type of thing. We think that's well-suited for some kind of retailer, restaurant, or maybe a hotel, or, you know, something with commercial in nature, so that ultimately this area around the Ridgegate Station has a nice mix of uses, just like we have at the Skyridge Station, right? We've got a hotel, we've got office, we've got residential. Same kind of thing, you know, I think can happen here, and that's the vision. This also creates an expanded public street network, which you saw in the plans. And in between the two lots for the market-rate apartment project, there actually will be a street there, but it'll be a private street that that developer will build. And that'll allow them to have an enhanced kind of a streetscape there that they're responsible for maintaining. And their vision is that, when you see here that SIP, you'll hear, their vision includes that that street could be closed down for festivals and events and farmer markets and things like that, because it's a private street. So that'll all make more sense to you when you see that SIP. But one of the things that this plat, this plat and the next plat does is it establishes right-of-way for that street that will continue to the east and go across Happy Canyon Creek, across through the regional park, and into the southwest residential village. You saw that plan from Justin during your study session. And so there's been a lot of discussion about what's the name of that street going to be, and I know, you know, everyone's interested and curious. And we've been talking with Shea about it, because, you know, I want to have a street name that they're happy with, because it goes through their village. And they're still trying to come up with their name for that village. They had a name, and then all of a sudden it like crashed and burned. So they kind of had to start over on coming up with a name for that village. And so they're not quite there yet. So I guess we'd like to ask for a little bit of patience on the street name, although I did propose, and the Shea folks are agreeable to this name. And so we could, you know, go with this if everybody loves it. And so what I would propose is the name Ridgegate Station Avenue. Most of the east-west streets like that, collector streets, are avenues. You know, we might be able to call it a something else, a street or a parkway or what have you, but the idea with Ridgegate Station is that it's a street that takes you right to Ridgegate Station, so it's kind of somewhat logical. So we have that name out there as, you know, sort of a placeholder, if you like it. But I guess we'd like to reserve the right to come back to you with another name, once they have their village name, and it might make even more sense to you. So we would hold off on recording this plat until we all are in agreement on that street name. We don't need to record this plat tomorrow. We just need to record it before we are ready to sell those lots to those individual developers, which is a little later on this year. So that's what I would say about the street name.
And Keith, when will, assuming council is, and I think they would be fine with delaying the name, how would you, would you come back to us and say, we'd like to name it X?
Whatever you require.
I mean, I think just sending something, just send a memo via, to me, and if we have an issue with it, you can come back, but just say, I just want to have a process to close the book on it. So that's what I'm looking for here. I don't, it's council okay waiting on naming it? You guys, I think it does make some sense to have an understanding of what the other street names are going to be, and maybe it makes sense to have it, you know.
Would the motion have to be conditional to that, or?
Yeah, to transmitting the proposed name via...
I guess we, you know, we're looking for something like maybe, you know, you're going to approve this plat.
Right.
But the recordation of the plat is subject to final approval on the street name.
Perfect.
Something like that.
Yeah, that, I mean, that works, I think that works, getting some head nods there. So yeah, that's fine. Any questions for Keith or Jennifer, though, on the plat?
Sort of a boring, technical thing, but it's really important.
It's not, well, I think it's, for us, it's exciting too, Keith. I mean, I, you know, we are starting to see the east side of the city of Lone Tree coming to life, and this is one of the foundational blocks to seeing that happen. So I think it's good. But we've seen plats before, so. Okay, so Jennifer, anything else for us?
I would just add that that second condition really addresses the street name, and I think really goes with what you talked about, and what Keith's talking about, so.
So we can approve the motion as, on the screen, and it addresses the naming of the issue. Thank you for clarifying that for us. And thank you for reading in the conditions. We appreciate that. Save the council's vocal cords. Okay, assuming there's nothing else from council, I will look for a motion.
I move to approve Ridgegate East filing one, Second Amendment, project number SB 19-66R, with the three conditions stated in the staff report dated June 29th, 2020, and which...
2020.
2020, yeah, 2020, this year, and which conditions shall be recorded in the official meeting minutes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. And now, we're actually going to hear from, she's a relatively new council mem, I mean, council member, I gave you a point, staff member. Shashana Floyd. We got to welcome Shashana prior to COVID, and we haven't had the opportunity to see her since. So it's great to have you here on item 10.3, the final plat of Ridgegate East, Sections 14 and 23, filing two, subdividing 25.314 acres into two lots, one tract and road right of way. Shashana Floyd, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I will attempt to make this somewhat brief for you, since this is really the twin plat, if you will, of this particular kickoff for Ridgegate East. So with that said, this is project SB 20-04R. You have essentially read the request already for me. And so this particular plat approval is for 25.314 acres, the creation of two new lots, one tract for drainage structure, and one new public right-of-way. That is essentially a base conceptual design for future development that I believe Keith is going to go over during his presentation. This application was received January 16th of 2020, and per Section 17-5-50, item nine, the city is allowed to approve final plats for non-residential, single-family attached, and multifamily uses prior to reviewing site improvement plans, subject to the Community Development Director's approval, which she has provided for this particular plat request. If you can go to the next slide, please, of the planning submission, if that's possible. Okay. Should be another slide there. Yeah, that is going to be for the previous application. There we go, fantastic. We're in business. Thank you, Jay. I appreciate that. All right. And then if we can advance to the next slide, please, for location. Fantastic, thank you. So this location is going to be essentially right across the street from the plat we just reviewed. It's south of Ridgegate Parkway, east of South Havana Street, and our key is Ridgegate Station. It is west of Happy Canyon Creek, and a new site for the regional park. And it is north of Schwager Ranch, and the lot owned by Parker Water and Sanitation District. Next slide, please. Existing conditions, a quick snapshot from Google Earth. If you are envisioning yourself standing in the middle of South Havana Street, which I do not recommend, looking north, Ridgegate Parkway is going to be here. And then the site looking northeast, you can see it is relatively flat, and you can see these trees here. That is Happy Canyon Creek. So this particular development site is adjacent to Happy Canyon Creek, which is a special flood hazard area, Zone X, as well as approximate flood risk areas that are currently in the final stages of remapping. The Public Works Department will be bringing that to you later this fall. But that is a small item that will be addressed with individual SIPs if needed. Next slide, please. Now I'll give you a quick overview of what you can anticipate in this particular area. This is covered in the Ridgegate Plan Development District Sixth Amendment, the Lone Tree City Center Subarea Plan, and under those two guiding documents for land use, Lot 1 is going to be mixed-use. You can expect building, character of buildings between three and five stories high with structured parking and minimal and/or flexible setbacks. Lot 2 is zoned for commercial use. That will accommodate buildings between one and three stories high with structured parking and variable setbacks. Next slide, please. Now we're going to get into the nitty-gritty, the really fun part. So to give you a quick orientation of the plat, again, here is South Havana Street. This is the area, as discussed in the previous application and previous filing, where we are seeing an expansion of right-of-way, particularly along Lot 1. So when you look to the conditions, and you see the condition indicating that the filing one, Second Amendment, must be recorded prior to this plat being reported, the reasoning is that Public Works is requiring 125-foot right-of-way expansion for South Havana Street, and that is being provided, as Keith mentioned in the previous discussion, due to some engineering negotiations. It will be partially on the previous plat and partially on this plat. So that's an explanation for that particular condition. You will also see here, relative to one of the other conditions concerning the drainage easement, currently, there is a drainage easement that is essentially right in the middle of where the right-of-way is going to go for that east-west connector, collector, that's going to go across Happy Canyon Creek and into Southwest Village. So drainage, roadway, not necessarily a good combination. So this particular use is going to essentially be shifted into Track A. That's going to be dedicated to Rampart Range Metropolitan District Number Five for maintenance of that particular detention area. You can see the flood plain here. And then finally, in the top area, not noted on the plat, but in the event that you have memorized the sub-area plan for the city center, you may have noticed...
Jay has.
I would have no objection. You may notice that there is a small local park called out for that particular area called South Greenway Vista Park. That is not addressed in this particular plat, as it is adjacent to Happy Canyon Creek. It's adjacent to the Mile High Flood District Project, currently under development, and it's also adjacent to the regional park planning process. So that will be something that will continue to be discussed and developed at a later date, either via SIP or either via the regional park discussion. So that is that particular item there. And then if I could go to the next slide, please. Thank you, Jay. And this is the extremely boring one. I think Linda probably likes all of the legalese, but. So relative to the additional conditions that you will see, note number six, up here is essentially just a technicality that references a change in language to subdivision improvement agreement, so that it is consistent with our subdivision code. And then the additional item is currently on the plat, as shown. It indicates that that drainage easement we referenced is to be vacated by this signature, and that's wherein it needs to be tied to those future drainage easement agreements that are under development between the two legal teams. Next slide, please. All right, referrals. Was sent out on referral early in the process, had a couple of different iterations. All referral items of note from various agencies will either be addressed in the future during the SIP process and individual construction processes. They will be addressed by the applicant currently have been addressed, or they show up in those conditions of approval, as discussed. Next slide, please. This particular item also was recommended for approval to city council by the Planning Commission on June 23rd via unanimous vote, with the same conditions as presented to you this evening. Next slide, please. Staff finds that this particular application is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, the Ridgegate Plan Development District Sixth Amendment, the Lone Tree City Central Subarea Plan, Chapter 17 of Municipal Code, which is our subdivision component. Additionally, it is in conformance with the roadway design and construction standards, Storm Drainage Design and Technical Criteria Manual, and the Grading Erosion and Sediment Control Manual. Thrilling reading, all of them. Finally, the park and school dedications that are noted in the subdivision code have been addressed in the city center subarea plan, and will continue to be addressed with further iterations of development. Next slide, please. All right, now we are to the very fun part. So I will go ahead and read the conditions of approval for you, and then I will turn it over to Keith to provide his presentation. Condition of approval A, the final plat presented to the city for signature shall revise Sheet 1, note number six, and shall replace all references to subdividers agreement with subdivision improvements agreement. Condition B, per Section 17-5-60, item 10, regarding final plat exhibit requirements, all road names shall be indicated on the final plat presented to the city for signature and recordation. All new road names shall be approved by Douglas County Addressing prior to presentation to the city for signature. Next slide, please. Condition C, recordation of this final plat for Ridgegate East filing two shall not occur until and unless the final replat for Ridgegate East Sections 14 and 23, filing one, Second Amendment, is approved and recorded with the Douglas County Clerk and reporter. Condition D, the applicant shall execute a temporary drainage easement agreement in a form approved by the city attorney to replace the drainage easement to be vacated, which shall terminate upon construction and completion of new drainage improvements within Track A. The final plat shall be revised to reflect this condition as determined by the city attorney. Thank you, next slide. With that, I would love to introduce again Mr. Keith Simon.
We're working you hard tonight, Keith.
It's okay. I'm happy to be here. Thanks, Shashana, and great job on this. Pleasure to work with Shashana. Good, great addition to your team there in community development. I'm Keith Simon with Coventry and Ridgegate. Again, not too much to really say about this one. We've kind of covered it and all the, everything else we've talked about, right? The one thing I did want to just point out, and you probably already all figured this out, but the eastern edge of this plat will fit perfectly with the Shea preliminary plan for the Southwest Village. So that's like a puzzle piece coming together right there. You'll see all that when you see the Shea preliminary plans. And then what we expect is that when Shea moves to the next step, their Phase One final plat, that will not only match up, but at that time, the land for the regional park would be conveyed to the city as a part of that plat approval as well. So just kind of looking forward a little bit and making sure everybody's on the same page about how all this stuff fits together like a jigsaw puzzle. But other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I guess the only other thing I'll comment is that we started working on this plat because we had a developer prospect for the four-acre site, the southern lot. And they got pretty far through the Ridgegate design review process and decided to not go forward any longer. This was a couple of months ago, due to a lot of different reasons, maybe partly COVID and other things. So we're back out looking for somebody else to do what they were going to do, which is a for-sale condo type of project, which we all want, and it's hard to get them to go. But we've got a couple of prospects we're working on. So we decided, you know, we still, even though we don't have an SIP, you know, following in quickly, thank you, Kelly, for letting us go forward with this plat. So we have a legal lot to sell to that next prospect. It also gives us the 15, 12 or 15 acres up along Ridgegate Parkway, that if we find a great prospect for that, we've already got a legal lot for that as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Great. Any questions for Keith on this? No. Nope, thanks. I didn't, thank you, and thanks again for being here. Okay. So with that, I'll look for the motion slide, and I'll look to council.
I move to approve project SB 20-04R, the final plat for Ridgegate East Sections 14 and 23, filing two, with the four conditions listed in the staff report dated June 29th, 2020, and which conditions shall be recorded in the official meeting minutes. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Wonderful. All right, last thing on the agenda is council comments. We will start with Mike.
I don't have any special comments.
Okay.
I would mention that coming together with Tall Tales Ranch and Schwager as an amenity in Lone Tree is just terrific, I think, for our community, and will help to further what we're all... we're all about in terms of the city.
Great, great. Thanks, Mike. All right, Jay.
All right. I missed seeing everyone's faces on the fourth. That's one thing. But I did want to give a shout out to the police department. I got a lot of really positive feedback from neighbors, given all of the fireworks, all the do it yourselfers, that they were very, the police department was very visible but very cooperative. So I'm relaying that to Chief Wilson and the gang.
Thanks. When?
So I will take the time.
It's not how it works, when.
I'll read quickly. I always experience a feeling of renewed American spirit after Independence Day. This one was certainly different, and I commend city staff for keeping the spirit of American independence alive without professional fireworks here in Lone Tree and in Douglas County. I'm pleased we will bring some tunes on the terrace programming to the Arts Center. It will be exciting to me to see people coming back to familiar routines and places. Once again, I'm proud of the professionalism and leadership within the Lone Tree Police Department. I want them to know that I support them and their work in the community and am grateful that they're part of our community. And this is the long part. Our membership in the Denver Regional Council of Governments has provided many tangible benefits to the city of Lone Tree and surrounding areas. I have a little bit of a list of what our dues bring us. Funding to the Denver South TMA, the TDM Partnership, funding to Ridge Gate Parkway widening Havana Street to Lone Tree City Limits, assistance with preparation of tip submittals for the 2020 to 2023 tip, part of the Douglas County Tip Forum, and the South I-25 Monument to C-470 Planning, an environment linkages study, part of the Denver South TMA and its members on intelligent transportation systems, transportation technology, traffic signal and incident management efforts. The Area Agency on Aging Sector of Dr. Cog provided Douglas County, including our residents, an estimated 37,000 units of services, and a unit of service might include a meal, a ride, an in-home service, or an hour of counseling. They also provide veteran-directed care. Dr. Cog uses significant land use and travel models to help forecast the timing, location, and extent of growth and development and the resulting transportation needs in the city of Lone Tree. For additional accuracy, Dr. Cog has added local development approvals to their modeling work. In addition to the region-wide benefits like Metrovision Transportation Planning Way to Go Bike to Work Day, to name a few, collaboration and funding through the Dr. Cog member governments provide access to data resources like planometric data sets and the Regional Aerial Photography Project. Dr. Cog provides a forum for regional transportation and celebration of talent and projects such as the Distinguished Service Award presented to John Cotton last year. And as an aside, in John Cotton's footsteps and making a path of their own, Justin and the Public Works staff continue to make us proud. I am honored and grateful to serve our community. Thank you.
And thank you for giving me that. Well, thank you for the good work you do down at the Denver Regional Council of Governments on behalf of the city of Lone Tree. That is a big job with lots of hours, as I know well. And thank you for your service there.
Thank you.
All right, Kath, what you got?
Just a couple of things. I just came back from 11 days of being on the road. Can you imagine in this environment? It was crazy. I was in Sheridan, Wyoming, Casper, Wyoming.
All the hotspots.
Gillette, Wyoming, and then Rapid City, South Dakota, over those 11 days. And I saw about 100 hours of baseball. And I'm just super happy to have been. But what I will say from that trip is it's fascinating to see how non-social distance and non-masking that part of the country is. So if you think that it's just really bi-area, it's completely different what's happening in all the different locations. So just find that with a little perspective maybe that I didn't have after being so well done here in Colorado. While on that trip, I attended the CML Annual Meeting. And kudos to Kevin and that team. They did the full executive board voting online, and it was perfection. I mean, I know Jay probably participated with them as well as others, but it worked flawlessly, which you just don't anticipate with that many people, the way we did roll call, the way we voted. So we voted in a new board, and we had our first executive board meeting that same afternoon. And we have our board virtual orientation this coming Monday. So things are often running with the new board, and I also got some great new folks who've joined us, and they've had their hands super full with all the changes that came about during this last session. So looking forward to a little time off from that as we look at other things that we can be working on till the next session arises. So that's it for me.
Thanks, Kath. So I want to give a huge shout out to Lone Tree Brewery, who released their 25th anniversary lager at the end of June. And, you know, they are such a great face for our city and the investment that they've made in the business they've grown here. So, and it's, and it's a pretty, rumor has it, it's a pretty tasty lager, too.
My dad says two thumbs up.
Yeah. Kudos, kudos to them for that. I also want to give a shout out to our police department for their professionalism and responsiveness over the Independence Day holiday weekend. We did receive some negative feedback from residents about, about lack of stopping other residents from lighting off fireworks in their yards. And I think, you know, it's very interesting, when I joined council, I would sit and have conversations with residents about frustrations that they had with the city, and it turned out to be frustrations they had with their neighbors. People driving too fast within their neighborhoods, people not stopping at stop signs in their neighborhoods, people not picking up after their dogs in their neighborhoods. And I think, you know, we are all given great personal freedoms and responsibilities in the United States of America. And, you know, the people who chose to light off fireworks really did tax resources. They taxed resources within our city, they taxed resources within our county. I heard that Douglas County, actually their 911 system crashed at one point because of all the phone calls surrounding illegal fireworks displays. And I recognize that for some people that that's a really good time, but I really do feel the city puts a considerable amount of resources, time, attention into trying to make sure all our residents follow the law and stay safe. But free will is free will. And I want to commend our police department for their visible presence out on the streets, the work that they did do. I was very glad we had an officer up on the bluffs to make sure we didn't have a repeat of the fire that we had a couple of years ago up there. And I want to just say to our residents, if you don't like what's happening in this community, please have good conversations with your neighbors about what is happening in your neighborhood, where people are parking or not picking up after their dogs or driving too fast, because this is all of our community, and it should not be our police department that is asked to go out and interfere in individual things that are happening within neighborhoods. We as a community should stand together and set standards for ourselves and live up to those standards. So I want to thank our officers for doing it. I had a wonderful Independence Day. I hope some of the staff who are not out on the, not part of our police department got to enjoy this holiday because it's not going to happen ever again. We hope you had a wonderful Independence Day, but our residents are looking forward to going back to our community celebrations. So I want to thank everyone for their attendance tonight. I want to wish Tall Tales Ranch happy sixth birthday. I want to wish our country a happy birthday. And I want to say our country is going to be what we make it, and let's collectively work together to make it as great as we can be. Please stay safe. Please socially distance. Please, when you can't socially distance, wear your masks. Thank you. We're adjourned.